Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, a meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Also, this time I'd like to ask that you silence all electronic devices. This time we'll turn to Councilmember Kathy Hikes, M. Knight's invocation.
Let us pray. In this week when we observe Arbor Day, we give you thanks for trees, we rest in their shade, breathe in their oxygen, feast on their fruit. Trees anchor the ground beneath our feet and purify the air around us. Their cycles are a silent, faithful witness to your goodness and providence. We are thankful too for those whose work sustains the city in which we live, for those who day and night maintain our public services. Bless our mayor and council so that through our discussions and decisions, we may enhance the well-being of our community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This time, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation, Arbor Day, September nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. This time I'd like to recognize Jeff Parsons, if he'd come forward. Proclamation proclaiming Saturday, September nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as Arbor Day in the city of Burlington. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this day, which eventually became known as Arbor Day, was initially observed in the state of Nebraska with the planting of over a million trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the important role of trees in our environmental system must not be taken for granted, trees can reduce topsoil erosion, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate ambient temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource from which numerous products are derived, such as paper materials for the construction industry as fuel for heating, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of beauty, joy, and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Ronnie K. Walls, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, as Arbor Day in the city of Burlington.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, and I especially appreciate that invocation. It kind of is a nice opening to what we're getting ready to do. Some of you may notice that the day that we proclaimed as Arbor Day is the first day of the Carousel Festival. And we don't let any Arbor Day go uncelebrated. So we are going to celebrate Arbor Day with the Tree and Appearance Commission, and I have some members here, I'll introduce them in a second. We're going to have a booth that we will man Saturday and Sunday. We will give out information about trees. Anything you want to know about a tree, we should be able to tell you. If we don't, we'll make something up. To top that, last year we had such a successful, yeah, tree giveaway. We gave away twenty-five cherry trees, and we had a lot of fun. Giving away trees is, you would not believe how happy someone can be to carry away a cherry tree to go home and plant. We heard so many stories about trees and things that had happened in the ice storm, and we were able to give away these trees. We're going to top that this year, and we're going to let Laura Mann, this is Laura Mann, this is Scott Keener, and Patsy Byrd, members of the Tree and Appearance Commission. And Laura's going to tell you a little bit about what we're going to do at the park.
What we're going to do at Carousel Festival is we have fifty trees this year to give away. So we'll give away twenty-five trees each, each day. And people just come by and they sign up, they give you a heart sob story of, "I've never won anything, and I'd really love to have a tree," and "How do I win this?" And we'll have a jar that you'll guess how many acorns are in it. And we have kids that'll come by and do the math, figure out how many layers, how many are in a layer. So it'll be fun, both Saturday and Sunday at the festival. So please come by and see us. We'll have a great, great setup, lot of information, and a lot of people to have fun with. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for serving on the committee as well. Thank you, Jeff. Before we get into the next item, which is approval of amendments, let me make a quick statement about Councilmember Jim Butler. He is stuck in traffic on I-40, where there's a major wreck with a transfer truck and underpass or something. So anyway, that's where he is. I'm not sure of the timeline. He said that he hadn't moved in an hour and a half, so I'm not sure when he's going to be here. Our next item is approval of amendments. August eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, excuse me, I jumped. Code of Ethics, this time we recognize City Clerk Renee Ward. Sorry, Ms. Ward.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest and matters that are before us. This time I ask of your potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
No, thank you. Approval of amendments, August eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, City Council meeting, September first, two thousand and fifteen, City Council meeting.
No move.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Pose. Adoption of the agenda.
We adopt the agenda as it written. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Pose. Consent agenda, these are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. To remove Brian Irwin from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Can I ask a question about?
Sure.
Can we then find a new appointee for that space, that place?
We, yes.
Next meeting maybe?
Right, okay.
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Pose, thank you. Public hearings. Public hearing has been scheduled to consider citizens' comments on the consolidated annual performance evaluation report for the community development program year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. This time we recognize Shauna Tilley. Welcome, Ms. Tilley.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is our annual report that we send to HUD, our CAEPER, which is our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. You received a summary of that in your packet, agenda packet. It was a notice published in the Times News on September tenth for comments to run through the required fifteen-day comment period, which ends on the seventeenth. To date, we haven't received any comments for the CAEPER. Just to give you a summary of what we've accomplished with the CBG Home Program, we did rehab ten homes this past year. We spent around seven hundred and four thousand dollars on that. We received a lot of program income through our home program. We were able to spend more money this year on that, those particular homes. We started the dual partnership with Habitat and Alamance Community Services to finish out the Apple Tree subdivision. Habitat has begun construction on the home, which will be nearing completion, and so has Alamance County Community Services. With our construction training program, we had eighteen individuals to complete this training over the last year. One of the projects that they worked on was some storage buildings that were donated to Allied Churches, along with a larger storage building that was done at Lake Kamak in the spring class. We completed a Friendly Avenue culvert rehabilitation project for twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. We had completed the abatement and new flooring at North Park in the Gimp area, thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And then Recreation did the bleacher replacement, the gym repainting, and the basketball rents for that project. We also completed several projects at Allied Churches. We expanded the half-bathroom facility into a bathroom facility for both women and children, so that they had a separated facility to use at the shelter. We also expanded and added a commode and shower stall for the single female shelter residents. And then we also provided an overhang extension for clients waiting in line at the food pantry. We spent fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars on that, and Allied Churches contributed eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars to that project. At North Park, for books and materials, we expended twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars for that project that we do annually. And then we also expended twenty-two thousand, ninety dollars for the Burlington Development Corporation's Hope and Steps program for permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing, those grants to stay in the community, and a total of twenty-two people were served with those programs.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Tilley.
And I just ask, at the end of the public hearing, that you approve the submission of this report to HUD. It's due by the end of the month.
Okay. Is a public hearing, anyone that would like to speak may do so. Anyone on this side that would like to speak on this report that was just, anyone on this side that would like to speak?
And we'll close the public hearing.
I have a question for Shawna. You've hit all of your goals, which is really impressive here. Eighty percent of the one about finding homebu, not first-time homebuyers.
Right.
And I was just curious, I mean, you came close to it, especially in the last year. Is that, was the economic downturn a factor in that?
Yes. So that was an issue with getting individuals qualified with the program that was solely at Alamance County Community Services, and so that's the reason we brought on Habitat as well, so they divided up those lots of that subdivision to get it built out. And so credit was the main problem with that, with that program. And so we've been able to bring in the other agencies to access.
Looks really good.
We have a motion?
A move that we approve the CAEPER.
You already have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. A motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Pose, thank you. Item number two, public hearing's been scheduled to consider an app-
I was a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Now, what, be in order to approve the program, so, and I have to move.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Pose, thank you. And that brings us to, let's see, there's no follow-up, okay. Item number two, public hearing's been scheduled to consider an application rezoned from B-2, General Business District, to CB, Conditional Business District, for the use of Unified Business Development. Property is located at the northeast intersection of Graham Hope Dell Road, North Church Street, south on Martin Street, referenced as Alamance County Parcel. Identification number fourteen seventy-eight zero five. At this time, we'd recognize Ms. Nelson. Ms. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff and the city's technical review committee, which included a traffic impact analysis. It has been through extensive reviews. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the request to council with the use and development conditions submitted. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. And it is hoped that this will help trigger further economic development in the area. Mr. Lawson Brown is here tonight to speak on this matter.
Okay, Mr. Brown, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the councils, my pleasure to be representing Burlington East Development LLC. We've been working on this for quite some time. Burlington East Development LLC is managed by Mr. Ed Tam, that I think all of you are familiar with, having come before you on numerous occasions. Basically, the request tonight is mandated by the UDO because there are multiple businesses on this ten-acre track that which will be subdivided into four parcels maximum. A convenience store with a auto laundry and gas pumps is proposed for the corner lot that borders Graham Hope Dell Road. A grocery store is proposed for the second lot going eastward. On the back of this track will be a police substation for the city of Burlington Police Department, and potential for a fourth lot at the southeast corner of Martin and Graham Hope Dell Road. This request, as typical, we worked very extensively with the staff. It really got bogged down because the North Carolina Department of Transportation and the City of Burlington, MPO, had identified the Graham Hope Dell, North Church Street, basically Graham Hope Dell Road, as a major traffic concern. So we had multiple meetings. At one meeting, we had, I think, fourteen or fifteen engineers from the city, the state, and two or three consulting agencies working through. What you have before you is that Burlington East, the applicant, will dedicate the right-of-way and make those improvements to the Graham Hope Dell Road and North Church Street, which are consistent with the anticipated North Carolina Department of Transportation Consultant Plan that is about six months behind this particular request. So the city staff was very concerned that there not be some improvements made by Burlington East that would later be, have to be removed by DOT. So all of that has been coordinated. There will be traffic signalization improvements also at the Martin and Graham Hope Dell Road at the expense of the applicant. You've heard Ms. Nelson's summary that this is consistent with the plans for Burlington. We think that it is a major step forward for this area that has been, the parking lot has been vacant for almost the forty years that I've been here. So we think it's a vast improvement. The North Carolina Railroad tracks that traverse this track, those easements were actually abandoned and terminated some time ago. That rail track used to run down the west side of the old Fairchild airstrip where the Walmart is, and incidental to the development that occurred south of this site, all of those have been terminated. And so I think everything is in order for this project to move forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that all of you have looked extensively at this as something that would be good for Burlington and particularly East Burlington. But I'm happy to answer questions. Mr. Tam is here, if I can answer the questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Brown before we open the public hearing?
I think I've got one, and maybe staff can answer this one. From the corner of Church and Graham Hope Dell going north, is that going to be opened up to three lanes? They put a turn lane in there to extend down where the old hospital starts at Barn Road, where there's three lanes there? Will that be, will that happen?
You mean further down from this development?
No, from-
Further north from this development?
Well-
Yes.
At the corner.
From the corner to-
North.
Right.
Yeah.
To Vaughn Road, where it intersects at Vaughn Road.
We were just looking up to Martin, right, and then further?
Well, this particular project-
It's a, it's a large scope project with DOT.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is because there's so much traffic on that, that area there, that this is really hard to turn on Martin Street either way you come on, come there, okay? If you put a stoplight there at Martin Street without putting a turn lane or a straight-through lane there, you're still going to have traffic backed all the way up.
And that, that signals analyzing about consultants. And with the existing configuration of the lanes, it's modeled fine.
How many engineers do you say were there?
That's why he said it modeled fine, or fourteen.
Yeah.
So there are improvements being done on that section between Church and Martin. There's some widening that the developers have been making.
Right, adding some turn lanes.
And that's coordinated with what DOT is currently studying in terms of what they're going to do.
It's just a quarter of a mile, less than a quarter of a mile, from Martin Street back to where it opens up, but, yeah.
But the traffic engineers and DOT came to an agreement.
That Martin Street would be the ending point. Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Brown or staff before we move into public hearing?
One, one item, one condition that changed either late Friday or today was that the DOT had requested a hundred-foot internal stem coming off of Church Street that was in the conditions for the stem coming off of Martin Street. So it would be remiss if I didn't mention that additional change.
Sure. Public hearing, anyone on this side that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, come forward and state your name and address, please.
Maureen Richmond, two zero four zero, Martin Street, Burlington, two seven two one seven. Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to participate in the government of our city. Burlington is such a promising place to live that all citizens, much like yourselves, have a stake in the direction taken by our city. This was never more true than in the request to rezone Alamance County Parcel, one four seven eight zero five, the now unused parking lot of the old Western Electric Plant. I come before you because I live in Burlington at twenty forty Martin Street, which is about a half-block east of the proposed rezoning. However, twenty forty Martin sits on the north side of Martin and therefore does not abut the parcel concern. Even so, my life will be greatly impacted by the proposed development. First, clanging and banging of the earth-moving machines as they lumber into place and begin the lengthy work of leveling the parcel and excavating for foundations. Then, the incessant peeping of backup warning alarms nagging anyone who can hear for hours at a time. Later, dust erupting in vast clouds and spreading over the area, some of it toxic from the removal of old asphalt. Construction noise for months, day and night, no doubt, bright lighting and unceasing racket even at night. Once construction is complete, continuing noise pollution all day as massive delivery trucks groan and hiss. Hope for a decent night's sleep or a moment of peace fades into oblivion. Even so, what threatens to disrupt my world is a pittance compared to what threatens the approximately one hundred residents of the trailer park which does abut the proposed development. Literate only in Spanish, most of the residents there know nothing of the development soon to invade their worlds. They've no idea they're soon to be living on the edge of a disruptive construction site, assaulted by endless racket and possibly glaring lights, with no relief in sight even after construction is complete. For as the site plan shows, the backside of the planned grocery store comes within twenty feet of the western property line of the trailer park. Right now, a row of trailers is positioned against that western boundary line of the trailer park property. What this means is that the back of the proposed grocery store would be a grand total of about twenty feet from the living quarters of living and breathing human beings. The planned six-foot fence will not deter sound and smell. Think of it, late-night delivery trucks slamming their sliding doors, dumpsters with that certain odor about them, gasoline fumes wafting about, a lurid glow from harshly lit signage, and the never-ending hum of the HVAC units cooling and heating a cavernous grocery store building with a ravenous appetite for climate control. None of this assails the residents now. They're living peaceably in their own community, pursuing jobs, paying the rents, raising children, holding family gatherings, and in general hoping for the good life, just like everybody else. In the language used by the city of Burlington to discuss the situation, the reality of the impact on the trailer park residents is unrecognizable. From a September one memorandum, memorandum sent to interim city manager Frank Hope by Director of Planning and Economic Development, Amy L. Nelson, I read that the zoning changes, quote, "The zoning changes as requested would not adversely affect the adjoining property," end quote. To Mrs. Nelson's assertion, I would respond that perhaps the zoning changes would not adversely affect the property, but they most certainly will adversely affect the people living on that property. That's a distinction worth making, and I believe the language we use to talk about this proposed construction should reflect the gritty truth and not a conveniently sanitized version thereof.
Thirty seconds.
May I have time seated to me by other members?
Sure.
I'll ring Lake Michelle sometime.
Yet the city leadership seems to have set these troublesome concerns aside, offering a superior interest as rationale for the project. Chairman of the Planning Board, Richard Parker, has been quoted in the Times News that "we need as much development in East Burlington as we can get," end quote. If this is the reason being offered why the proposed development should be allowed and why so many living human beings should be saddled with increasingly unpleasant living conditions as a result, then it only seems fair that we examine the notion of economic development. To that end, I ask, does economic development consist of providing distant corporations with an opportunity to ply their profit machines at the expense of the residents? Does economic development consist of a few low-paying jobs which may not even be awarded to locals? Does economic development consist of driving nearby businesses out of existence? Does economic development consist of offering goods and services to a population largely needing work instead? Does economic development for East Burlington consist of tax revenues which may be spent on things not of direct benefit to our end of town? I live in East Burlington, one half-block from the proposed development, and I can tell you the people in this immediate area do not need another opportunity to spend, especially for goods and services already accessible, but rather an opportunity to earn. If people figure in the economic development equation, then what people need is what the economy needs. Conversely, what people do not need, the local economy does not need either. Three blocks to the east of the proposed development, there sits a food line frequented by the locals. Two blocks south sits Walmart with a full grocery line. Immediately to the west is an established Exxon. Two blocks north is a Chemco selling discount gas. What need exists for a third food store and a third gas station in space of three blocks in the midst of an economically challenged population? What the actual residents of East Burlington need in the old Western Electric parking lot is very different than what's being proposed. How about a green space, a train, a job training center, a locally-owned cottage industry providing jobs for locals, or a combination of these? Sure, give us the police station, we welcome that with open arms, but the East Burlington I know has no true need for what Burlington East Development intends. In fact, if this proposed installation competes with our existing businesses, it's likely to leave us with more vacated commercial buildings than we already mourn. I therefore respectfully request the rezoning application be set aside, and a public comment and inquiry period of at least one month be allowed. In Destination Burlington, the city council has embraced the belief that we in Burlington should create a shared vision for enhancement of our city and that we should preserve the character of our community. If we residents of Martin Street are excluded from the discussion and our neighborhood destroyed, a mockery has been made of the principles articulated by Destination Burlington. Copies are available.
Thank you, Ms. Richmond. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak? You just gave your time away. Sorry. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Mayor and council, thank you. I'm really not informed, as I should be, on this subject. I do recall-
Mr. Brooks, excuse me, just name and address, please.
I'm sorry. John Brooks, twenty-six oh eight, Saintsbury Drive, two seven two one five. That's in the Grove Park area.
Thank you.
Midtown. Midtown. Uh, I'd like to be a lot more informed than I am at this stage. Uh, I think that Ms. Richmond raises some very valid concerns and issues for that community. Uh, I've seen what has been done, and I don't know if it was done by the city or by the developers, but years ago when the Trinity Worship Center was developed, it's a church, a very expensive wall was erected between the church back parking lot and the residents right behind there. I'm sure you remember that. Uh, I wonder, on the west side of town where the Lowe's Department Store is, if there were any concessions made for the residents in Waterford, which is a high-end development there. I know there's a special driveway that prevents the, or keeps the Waterford folks from having to get on University Parkway to get to the grocery store. Probably all handled by the, by the private developers. Uh, is it, is it my understanding that the convenience store would be a Sheetz Center? Okay. Maybe that's a rumor. Uh, I live within about a quarter of a mile, maybe a little less, of a Sheetz Center. Uh, it's, I'm okay there. I, I live pretty close to the interstate as well. Sometimes you can hear the traffic, sometimes you don't. Uh, but that would be a lot different if I lived from the Sheetz on Alamance Road, say halfway to the Home Depot Store. That, that would make a pretty remarkable difference. And it sounds like, the way you described the community, that there will be some residents that are very in, in close proximity to, to the development there. And finally, I would just say, I know that we do need economic development, and this will create maybe quite a few jobs, and, uh, that's valuable. Uh, but another thing that I'm big on is, is community and trees and, you know, it's appropriate that Arbor Day is coming up. I'd like to see 500 trees go into that space, not excluding the, the development, but, you know, as a part of it. I think the, the space on Alamance Road at the Sheetz has some shrubs and some crape myrtles and a few trees, but they could use a lot more. And I think overall in the city, we're looking to, to do that. It's just a, it engenders a higher quality of life. So, uh, I don't see the harm in, I know you've worked on it a lot for maybe longer than a year, I don't know, but if, if a little more time would be useful, then I'd applaud your agreeing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Anyone else on this side that would like to speak?
No more time?
No more time? Do you understand why? I just wanna make sure you understand why. I'm not shutting you down. You, you gave your time to Ms. Richmond. Okay?
Their whole moment, their whole five minutes.
Yeah. No, no. You're good. Uh, thank you. Sorry. Yes, anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Yes, sir. My name is Bankim Desai, and I'm from 1846 North Church Street, Burlington, North Carolina, 27217. That's from CB Mart, the Exxon gas station. And, uh, I would like to add something to, like she said, that one block from there, there is a food line, other block there is a Walmart. Even if you count even two-mile radius from that development site, that's like 50 convenience stores. And, uh, they're thinking, like I read on the paper, it says that it's for a business development. But for business development, that's already gonna kill too many businesses that's already been there from years. And, uh, like more job offerings. I think too many people gonna be like unemployed. Like one of the gentlemen said, it's gonna be a Sheetz. That's what I heard. It could be a rumor. But according to me, Sheetz is a more kind of a restaurant store than a convenience store, even after you count too many restaurants in that two-mile radius. That's about 25 restaurants, about everything. KFC, Taco Bell, McDonald's, biggest grocery stores, Family Dollars, everything. And like crime scene ways, what I would, I heard that Burlington is on like, uh, number 10 right now. That's what I heard. I don't know. But, uh, I'm open 24 hours. Too many of the stores open 24 hours. If it's Sheetz, I know it's gonna be open 24 hours. Like particular my location, I know Valero location, we shut down for about two hours every weekend.
Excuse me for interrupting you. Are you a business owner in that area?
Yes, sir, I am.
What is the name of your business?
CB Mart.
The Exxon.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Like we close for- We and Valero, we close for like two hours, every Friday night, every Saturday night, every Tuesday night, every Thursday night. And if I believe it's Sheetz, it's just because of the crime scene. And if it's Sheetz, it's gonna be 24 hours, I don't think they're gonna be open. I, I mean, I don't think they're gonna be closed. So according to me, I think just is gonna be increasing crime scene, like unemployment for too many people, and lost of revenues and everything. That's also.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side would like to speak? Mr. Brown?
Well, members of the council, uh, I want to point out to you that this property is already zoned B2, which is general business. We are actually down-zoning it and putting additional conditions on, uh, this property. The property immediately to the east of this property is zoned B2. The property immediately to the west of this property is zoned I2, which is industrial. So, uh, again, I'll emphasize that it's consistent with the long-range plans for the city of Burlington, and it's really more restrictive than what's there now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any, any questions of Mr. Brown? I'm gonna ask, I'm, um, I guess we need to close the public hearing first.
Move that the public hearing is closed.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? I'm gonna suggest, since Councilmember Butler is not here, that maybe we could continue this conversation, dialogue, until the first meeting in October, if that would be appropriate with council.
That's appropriate with me, so I would so move.
I got a motion. I made the motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye? Aye? Oppose? Okay. Uh, what's the next meeting? What?
October 6.
October 6. We'll have a continuation of, of this conversation. Anything else I need to do with that?
You've closed the public hearing.
I've closed the public hearing.
You just be voting on it.
Just be voting on it.
Discussion among council.
Right, exactly. No more discussion from out there. Any other comments from that?
Yep.
Good? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item number three of public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application rezoned from R15 Residential District and O&amp;I Office and Institutional District to CB Conditional District to allow for an expansion of the parking area. The property is located at 1329 Huffamille Road, referenced as Alamance County Partial Identification Number 112616, and being a portion of partial numbers 112619 and 112620. This time we recognize Ms. Nelson. Ms. Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This request is to amend a conditional rezoning that was approved by city council on June 19th, 2007. It has the recommendation of staff and was unanimously recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the use and development conditions submitted. The, the commission also recommended that the official zoning map and the comprehensive land use plan be amended to reflect the rezoning. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Joe Kahlo is here to speak to this request.
Mr. Kahlo, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Crenshaw Properties. The rezoning that we're requesting is just to address an issue with a deficiency in parking at the car dealership. Um, and there are three parcels of land. I'll, I'll address them, I guess, in a clockwise fashion. There's the parcel of land that is to the north and center. Uh, it's to the rear of a residence, uh, and that property is under contract with my client and the Mannings. Um, the residence will be left intact. We're not asking for that portion of the lot to be rezoned. We want that to remain a buffer that's there. There's another residential lot that is the northeastern one that is already owned by my client. Again, we're only rezoning the back part. We want to leave the house in front intact and act as a buffer. Um, and honestly, as just sort of a cleanup, there was a piece of property that we acquired from the adjoining property owner some time ago, and it was, it's still zoned O&amp;I. It's just a grassed area. We just want to bring that in. Um, we did, uh, at least do some contact there, and I guess to use a courtroom thing, if I can approach and just hand this up.
Sure.
We did, uh, get a letter from, um, the Currys who own the adjoining piece of land that's O&amp;I, just to let you know that they didn't have any objection to the rezoning. My client owns the, will, will own the two tracts that are there, and he had some dialogue with, I think it's Ms. Oakley, who owns the other land up there. And when he spoke with her, she had no issues with it. That may be because he had bought a large portion or some portion of her property when he originally did the dealership. There is one condition that we would like to address, although it was unanimously approved by P&amp;Z. There were some concerns expressed with regard to external amplification with the car dealerships, how they have PA systems. The car dealership does use an existing PA system. As an additional condition, we would add that the existing PA system not be expanded or further amplified.
Sure.
As we don't want to bring any noise that would bother, uh, the neighbors out there. And to the extent the council may have any technical questions, because I don't purport to be an engineer, Brent Cochran is here from Fleming Engineering and can answer those questions.
Okay. Any questions at this point from council? It's a public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak? Come forward, please. Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Aye? Oppose? Okay.
Move the approval of the rezoning.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose?
Motion for a statement of consistency. The city council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the city of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan, and this action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land use in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
Need a second.
Need a second.
Need a second? Second?
Thank you.
I thought that was already a second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose? Wow. Thank you, sir. New business, item four, city council consider adopting a resolution approving the city of Burlington's 2012 Local Water Supply Plan. This time we recognize Bob Patterson. Welcome, Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Mayor and council, um, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Um, tonight I have a, uh, request to approve a resolution approving the 2012 Local Water Supply Plan. Um, you may be wondering what a local water supply plan is. Um, it's a assessment of a water system's current and future needs and its ability to meet those needs. We're required by General Statute 143355L, or that statute requires all local governments that have a, a water system to, uh, prepare a local water supply plan. And, um, the administrative code requires us to submit that data electronically. The data, um, there's a copy of it in, in your packet. It includes information on our customers, our water use, our sewer, uh, treatment use and capacity, various planning projections that are, um, calculated based on the data that is input. Um, the, uh, the data is from 2012. We're required to submit the data by the end of March each year. The state then reviews it and approves it. Um, they issued their approval in 2014, right about the time we had the big sewer overflow. We overlooked bringing this to you at that time. So, uh, the state was reviewing our current, or actually they're reviewing the 2013 plan and reminded us that we need to bring a resolution to you every five years to approve this plan.
Questions from council to Mr. Patterson?
This won't be due till another five years.
2017 plan, which was, be approved sometime in 18.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Aye? Oppose? Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Public comment, period none. Right, chief, uh, city council comments. 28th Annual Carousel Festival this Saturday and Sunday, September 19th and 20th. Burlington Animal Services offering a half-price pet adoption from September 19th through 26th. Also, um, Mr. Kirkman, thank you for moving forward on the, um, Edgewood-Shatterbrook Turn Lane. That's a top-rated project, I would think, and that's moving along nicely. So, thank you very much. I'd also like to bring your attention still to Rockwood-O'Neil and Edgewood, as well as the Turn Lane. So, um, we would appreciate that. Also, at this time, I'd like to thank, uh, the citizens and others, council members and others, staff for the calls, emails, and text messages. Uh, the doctors are still trying to attempt to figure out what transpired on Labor Day Monday. At this point in time, we don't really know. So, we'll continue on that path, but, uh, thank you very much for your, your thoughts and prayers. Any other comments from council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session. Go ahead. Just going to North Carolina General Statute, section 143, that's 318, uh, 1184, to discuss potential economic development projects.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Oppose? We shall return. We shall return.[785.51]